Hello and welcome. My name is Jacob Williamson and I will be the moderator tonight. I am joined by Linda Hearn, the Executive Director of the Calhoun County Area Chamber and Visitor Center. I want to thank everyone for being here. I want to also thank the Chamber and the Chamber's Public Affairs Committee for organizing this event on behalf of the voting constituents of the town of Oatchee. And I want to thank Oatchee High School for hosting us tonight. Thank you to everyone in attendance here in person and also that will be watching this at a later date. Audience and candidates, we ask that you please put all electronic devices on silent or airplane mode. Please remain quiet in consideration of your fellow attendees and the candidates who have given their time to be here tonight. I will now go over the format of tonight's event. So candidates are seated left to right from place one to place five in the order they appear on the ballot. Before the event, numbers are drawn to determine the speaking order. Once each candidate's name is called, they will step up to the podium and deliver their message. Once that candidate has finished speaking, we will thank them for the time and move on to the next candidate. After each candidate has spoken, once all the candidates have spoken, we will move on to the mayoral candidates. Candidates will have three minutes to speak and will be given a signal when they have thirty seconds remaining. The timer will start when a candidate begins speaking. Upon expiration of their time, a signal for stopping will be provided. We will allow you to finish your sentence once the three minutes is up and then we will interrupt you and ask you to stop. After all the council candidates have spoken, we will take a few minutes to transition to the mayoral candidates. Finally, we ask that the audience hold comments and applause till the end of the event out of courtesy and consideration to all the attendees and candidates here. And thank you, we want to thank all of the candidates here. All of the candidates have sacrificed their time and money to serve the public. They all have loved ones and supporters in the audience. We ask that everyone be courteous and respectful throughout tonight's event. And with that, let us begin. We will start with our first candidate for place one, Ms. Celecia Jennings.
Good evening, y'all. Can y'all hear me? Okay, most of you know me. I've been here in Oatchee all my life, all sixty-four years of my life. I have two kids, Gray Donner and Dawn Higgins is my daughter. They were in sports here at Oatchee High School. Gray was a football player, baseball player, and a basketball player. And I have two wonderful grandkids. And I've been on the town council for two, since 2000. I retired from the Calhoun County Board of Education Transportation Department. I drove a school bus for Oatchee School for twenty-seven years. I am an advanced and regular certified municipal government leader municipalities. Also, I have accomplished many things in twenty-five years. We all have. But once it's on the council here with me now, we worked together for twenty-five years under Mayor Joseph Robertson and Steve Baswell. And a lot of things were accomplished during that time. One of them is our, we got a new town hall right after I came on board. We left the old town hall, went to a new one. And then at that time, we put in for a grant to get our senior center and our library. And it was a $250,000 grant that we received, but we had to do $63,000 match money at that time. And also Representative Le- the late Levi, I worked with him and Randy Wood both on these grants that we got. And also, I started the Safe Island Week program here in Oatchee in 2004. I also helped with the Christmas decoration and the Christmas events. And I've assisted in bringing in several businesses. One of the main businesses was Fort McLellan Credit Union. I worked with three different grocery stores. I know one was when Mike Sanders came in and Jeff came in and opened, and now we have the Circle Duckie Grocery Store. And we helped get Dollar General here and the other dollar store that came in. And I helped with the Oatchee Playground down at Harts Ferry Park. We done that. And we just, we purchased thirty-five acres from Alabama Power for the new softball and baseball field complex that's built now. And we went in and redone the grocery store and paved the parking lot. And we researched, Joey Robertson and I researched the Oatchee history and put a history book together in his time that he was there. And with Mayor Steve Baswell, we extended the water system for the Angler Rail Facility, which is on Highway seventy-seven there. And we also purchased a hundred and fifteen acres. I did not see your sign, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings.
I didn't get to put my accomplishments. If I could say one more sentence. What I have a vision for here, y'all can pick up these for me after the meeting if you want a copy.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Jennings.
It's hard to read everything in three minutes.
It is, it is. Alright, our next candidate for place one is Mr. Wesley Walker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank y'all for coming here tonight. My name is Wesley Walker. Oatchee is my home. I've been here for over twenty years. We chose Oatchee to raise our kids here, my wife Casey, and I have my son, twelve years old, my daughter's six years old. Long before I had children, I was part of the community. I helped coach youth Little League Baseball. And here in the past few recent years, I have coached, continued coaching baseball. I've helped coach wrestling and continue in umpiring. I've done some umpiring. So the town does mean a lot to me. I'm not running for city council because I love politics, face it, who likes politics? But what I do want to see is our town not necessarily grow, but I think we have been stagnant for way too long. I think there's some improvements that need to be done. And I want to protect and enhance it and make sure that it's working for everybody. I don't want big city growth, but I do want some growth. Excuse me, I'm sorry. And I'm nervous too, if y'all can't tell. Not good at talking in public. But one thing I want to do is encourage more community involvement across all ages. I would like to start live streaming the city council meetings, get everybody involved. The reason I would like to live stream is so the working community, they can be there, they can actually watch and be a part, along with the senior citizens, they can be a part of that without having to physically be there. I want to start with our seniors. First of all, our seniors, they're the foundation of our, of our town, let's face it. And right now, our reliable transportation is past you guys. These guys' buses is breaking down. We have a patched up bus right now, and they're continuing to try to drive this patched up bus. So I think we need to listen to them and give them the resources that they deserve. And I think we need to meet with them at least once a month, have coffee with them, see what their wants, what their needs are. We got to be more involved with our, with our senior citizens. For the families and the future of the generations, we need a safe, updated recreational park. I know we've talked about it before with a few of us. We need, we need a park with a walking track, splash pad, basketball courts. We need a playground for our kids. We don't have a good playground. We got Harts Ferry Park, let's face it. We own the Harts Ferry, Harts Ferry Park right now. It's a major high school, we're going to go now seventy-seven. So we need a place that brings the people together, a place where we can use the Oatchee strong spirit to host food truck nights, community events, and even more. Also, we must not forget about the people who actually run this town and keep it run safely. That's our policemen, firefighters, and our city workers. They choose to serve our town because they love this place. I've talked to, I know several of them. They love this town. So I think we owe it to them to invest their support, safety, and their future. I will bring to you a strong work ethic, pride in what I do, a reputation for being dependable, approachable, and committed. Love to have you both, guys. Thank you.
Alright, thank you again to both of our candidates for place one. We'll move on to our candidates for place two, starting with Mr. Butch Mitchell.
Good evening to one and all. How y'all doing today?
We'll give you, we'll start, we'll let you start over. He, she, we had some technical difficulties.
I said, "Good afternoon." Folks, I come here with a heavy heart tonight. If I break down, I'm sorry. My wife just passed away, a sixty-year marriage. And I apologized, but she was, I know y'all know that I had, I'd put up no signs, no work. I ain't done anything. It was more important for me to be aware with her. And I was holding her hand, "You should die." Anyway, I'm Butch Mitchell. I worked at Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company. I was a union rep for forty-three years. I negotiated major contracts for thousands of people. So I know a little something about what goes on in the city. Somebody missed it? You know, we got a great police force here, you believe it or not. But while I was here back when we didn't have a great police force, and that's not a good thing. As people in this room knows the thing. They ain't locked me up one time being drunk and hadn't drank a drop. In disturbing fees because I went, a woman was, tell you what kind of police we had back then, folks. I had, I had a young man down in a ditch. One had his foot on him and the other was hitting him with the damn t- with the taser. And his mother hollering at me, "Butch, calm down here. They killing him, they killing him." This is fact. I go down there, pull the police from off, he said, "You're drunk." I go to jail. But guess what? Then Mr. Rob- Mr. Joey Robertson was mayor. He called me down there and he said, "We gonna drop all the charges if you just won't sue the city." And I said, "Joy, I love Oatchee." I got no, you know, but I hadn't done anything wrong. They dropped everything. But I love Oatchee. I've been here eighty-one years. I played ball here, my son played ball, my grandson played ball, everybody. Everybody, I see all these faces. And I guarantee you, some of them I've coached, Pee-wee, junior high, baseball. It's just, it's, it's home, it's home. And I understand this about we need some growth. Some growth is great. I worked at Goodyear for forty-three years, and the people at Goodyear sometimes was afraid to go through Oatchee, afraid. You know why? They gonna get stopped. We don't have that now with police department we got. They are good people, they'll listen to you. Now if you mess up, they put you in jail. But that's what they're supposed to do. But I will solemnly ask for your votes. I apologize for being emotional, but I had it for sixty years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to our next candidate, Ms. Lee Gardner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Gardner and it's an honor to be speaking with you tonight. I want to share with you why I'm passionate about serving this community that I love. I've lived here for many years and I have the privilege of managing an independent pharmacy for sixteen years in Oxford, as well as running my own small business. I've also been actively involved in our schools, the PTO, the Athletic Booster Club, and volunteering in community events. Through these experiences, I've learned that the town's strength lies in its people and the connections we build. I'm running for town council because I believe in Oatchee. And I believe we can make it even better. I have a vested interest in seeing our town thrive. And I want to support all of you, from our children to our seniors to our hard-working small business owners. Our youth are the future of Oatchee, and they deserve investment. I want to see us work together to create more safe, fun spaces for them to play, whether it's a splash pad or a new playground area. It's time to give our kids places to grow, have fun, and build memories. I also want to be a strong voice for our seniors, who have given so much to this community. I'd like to stay involved in the community center, making sure it continues to be a space for connection and support for our elder residents. One of my top priorities is our small business, businesses. They're the lifeblood of this town. As a small business owner myself, I know the challenges they face. I want to spend time talking with them. All the owners to hear their concerns, address their needs, and find ways to help them succeed. I also want to focus on protecting and preserving our Coosa River. It's not just a beautiful resource, it's a key part of our town's identity. We need, we need to do everything we can to preserve its health for future generations to enjoy. And last but certainly not least, I'm fully committed to supporting our police officers that keep us safe, and they deserve our respect and backing. I will do everything in my power to ensure that they have the resources they need and to serve our community effectively. I'm not running for council because I have all the answers. I'm running because I care about Oatchee. And I believe that working together, we can accomplish great things. I want to be a council member that listens, who understands the needs of our community, and who works with all of you to make Oatchee even a better place to live. I would be honored to earn your vote and your trust. Together, we can make a positive impact on this town. Thank you, and may God bless Oatchee.
Move on to our candidates for place three, starting with Mr. Raymond Underwood.
Good evening, and thank you, thank you all for coming out tonight. And my name is Raymond. I know a lot of people call me Ramon. And when I was in school, they thought I was a girl, supposed to feel that need. But it's Raymond, and I am running for town council, place number three, and I would appreciate your support. I grew up in the Anderson area. I, I've been, I lived in the Anderson area. Been in and out of Anderson all my life. Been through Oatchee basically all my life too. Went to Alexandria. I grew, grew up in the Blue Mountain area. So I've worked at Blue Mountain. I grew up in this area. So I'm familiar with Anderson, Alexandria, Oatchee. Like I said, all my life, I've been in and out of Oatchee. Went to school at Alexandria, graduated in class of nineteen sixty-five. Probably some of my classmates are out there. Some of their grandchildren are probably out here tonight too. College, I went to, I attended Jacksonville State University, graduated in August of nineteen seventy-four with a degree in accounting. After graduating in nineteen seventy-four, my civilian life careers, I've had three careers in my time. My civilian career, I, I worked for the Department of, Department of Defense as an accountant. After I graduated from college, I majored in accounting. I started to work for the Department of Defense as an accountant. And I worked for the Department of Defense for about twenty-eight years. I've probably been all over the southeast, in a lot of places in Europe. I've worked at Anfield, McLellan. I've worked in Huntsville. I've worked in Germany for five years. Spent five years over there in Europe, also in Fort Sill, Oklahoma. Been in Georgia. So I've kind of been all over the southeast. So twenty-eight years, I worked for the Department of Defense. After that, I retired, and then I went back into the military. Initially, I went in the military in nineteen sixty-six. I was in the Air Force for about four years, seven months, got out, went to college, went to work for the Department of Defense. And then later, in nineteen eighty-three, I rejoined the Alabama National Guard. Joined the National Guard in eighty-three, eighty-six. I began my warrant officer commission, kind of moved around again, and stayed in the National Guard and Army Reserves until like two thousand and three. Then in two thousand and three, in the military, I went full-time active duty again. Finished my military time. So I've got twenty-eight years of working for the Department of Defense, about thirty years in the military. Retired from the military. Thirty seconds, and I'm gonna say this, but time went past very fast. I didn't say I had three minutes. Anyway, I'd love to be your representative on the city council. And I had a lot of things I'd like to say, my agenda and all that. But to be your representative, I was looking at this board up here before when I came in, and I would like to be all of these things as your representative. And I would appreciate your support. For town council, place number three.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Our next candidate, Mr. Kip Reeves.
Alright. Good evening, everyone. Most of you guys know me, I'm Kip Reeves. My family has been in or around Oatchee for five generations now, so we've been here for a long time. I know this town. I've lived in this town. I love this town. Went to school here all twelve years. And I believe as a town, it's time for us to move forward. I'm not here to tear down what's happened in the past. They've done some good, they've done some really good things. I just want to move forward. That's why I'm running. And to let you know, I've got five points that I'm gonna go over. Point one, I'm here to support you. We need to fix our outdated park rules where the kids can actually use the parks. And we need to improve and modernize the parks that we do have. Two, I want to go after grants to get that done because I don't want to raise taxes on anybody. We need to go after the grants and work very hard to get them, and I will work hard to get the grants. Three, I want everything to be very transparent. People deserve to know what's going on at all times. And I would also like to stream this town council meetings to keep it where people don't have to get up and come to meet, and they can watch it on, online, and can interact with us from the live streaming. Four, I would like to also protect our waterways. The river and local creeks around here are our treasure. Nobody else has it in Calhoun County. Anderson doesn't have a river. Oxford doesn't have a river. We have the river. And then we have three giant creeks that run through Oatchee too that could be used as resources. Piedmont uses Terrapin Creek, the way Piedmont uses it. We don't take advantage of any of that. And we got, our kids are going to Terrapin Creek at Piedmont instead of running, running and working down to Oatchee Creek and working down Talas Hackett Creek or going down Kane Creek. And I just don't want to see that keep going on. I want to make it, our, our town needs to be known as the Waterway Town. We need to be known for our rivers and creeks. And my fifth point is smart growth. I agree, we need to grow. There's certain things that everybody needs here in town to make it more convenient, especially for our seniors where they don't have to go all the way to Oxford or all the way to Anderson or Gadsden to get everything. We need to have conveniences here where people can make short drives and stay in town, and then the taxes go back to town too to help us improve it on top of that. So let's plan for progress in the town that fits our town values and keep it small. I'd be proud to earn your vote, and let's move Oatchee forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. And thank you to both of our candidates for place three. Move on to our candidates for place four, starting with Mr. Brian Griffin.
I see how fast the three minutes goes by, so I'm just gonna read this and hope for the best with this lot. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Griffin. I'm running for town council, seat four. I'd like to thank you all for being here. You just showing up and being present and listening and laughing too. It shows that you care about the town. I'm not a politician. I'm a husband, a father, someone who chose to raise their family right here in Oatchee. I'm running because I believe we need fresh leadership that delivers real results, not more of the same talk that we've heard for many years. I've been here in Oatchee for a little bit over fifteen years. And I do believe when I first came to Oatchee fifteen years ago, we had more then than we have now. But Oatchee needs more eating options. I'm, you know, I'm very big on social media. That seems to be the, the major topic that everyone in the community is talking about is eating options. Places that attract eating options are places that attract families and bring in revenue to, to the town. Every time you go to Alexandria, where you go to Jax, Foodland, UC, our Oatchee kids or Oatchee graduates, over there working, high school kids. We need more, just as simple as one restaurant. One more restaurant would be enough to keep some of our kids that's in our high school, in our town, having to travel and go elsewhere to work. But, um, let's see here. We can't talk about progress without talking about the people who are the foundation of this town. That's our seniors. We need to make, we need to make sure they're heard. You know, a lot of people don't even know that we have a senior cit- senior citizen room here in Oatchee. They're, like I said, they're the foundation of this town. It's, you know, it's real important that we take care of our seniors. They need safe, reliable transportation. Get them back and forth to appointments, grocery store, and even just routine, normal events. This campa- this campaign is not about pointing fingers, you know, blaming anyone for anything. But I do believe that Oatchee can do better. I believe Oatchee can be better. Nothing I've said is impossible dreams, it's, it's just things that are overdue. I feel that the current administration, like, like Kip said, they did some good things, but maybe the time has passed them. We need some fresh ideas. And I'm, I'm offering solutions. I'm here to work. I'm here to listen. I'm here to get it done. So tonight, I'm asking for your support, not just for me, but for a new direction for Oatchee.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Hey, thank you.
We'll move on to our next candidate, Ms. Teresa Lot.
My name's Teresa, Teresa Lot. I've been a member of this community for my entire life. I have deep roots in the city and town of Oatchee. As Lisa stated earlier, I'm also certified and advanced municipal official. I've been on the council many years, and I still think I have a lot of new ideas to bring to the table. We're presently discussing a recreation center for our youth. That's been on the back burner, it's come back to the front burner. And that would be something that's in our vision to do. I was involved with the library, the senior board, senior center. And most Oatchee people do not want change. They moved to Oatchee for the small, simple town. But we can have a small, simple town in growth. I would love to have new businesses come into the town. But you know, a lot of businesses need sewer, a lot need natural gas, and those are things we do not have. And we don't have the money to get those things. So they can tap into our sewer that we do have that does the shopping center and the town hall. But like that, like I say, a lot of people do not want the town. I'm invested in our town. I'm invested with a vision for the future. I want our seniors taken care of. I want a new bus for them. Why not? I'm a senior, and I visit the senior center, and I love it to go down there and sew. I love it. But you also have to have pride in your town and in your community. Not in just your town and your community, but your property. Everybody has pride in their property by the way you keep your property. And that's what we need with a town as well. We try to keep our town neat, garbage picked up, the grass cut. We have two maintenance men who are awesome. And we have a staff in town hall that is awesome. And we have recently been able to give everybody a pay raise across the board, which in years past, we've never been able to do. But now our finances are where we can do some of these things. And I would appreciate your vote. I do have a big vision. Our hundred and fourteen, a hundred and fifty acres that we just recently purchased, we're waiting for somebody to approach us. "Hey, I want to move out here, what do you have to offer me?" We've got a hundred and fifty acres, what do you want to do there? Thank you, and I appreciate your vote.
And thank you to both of our candidates for place four. We'll move on to the candidates for place five, starting with Mr. Wayne Carden.
Good afternoon. Thank you to Jacob and Linda for giving us this platform. But most importantly, thank you to all of y'all for coming out and listening to our ide- our ideas. For those that don't know me, my name's Wayne Carden. I've lived in Oatchee for twenty-six years with my wife and my two daughters, who both graduated from Oatchee. I have worked in and around Calhoun County for twenty-five years as a banker. I, well, I've never held public office before, but it is something that has been on my heart and on my mind for several years. I love helping people, and that's really one of the main reasons I got into banking to begin with. Oatchee has been and continues to be a wonderful place to live. My wife and I fell in love with this community as soon as we moved in. And I will always work to preserve that small-town feel, that small-town charm that Oatchee has. But I do feel that there are some meaningful changes that could be made to help our town grow. grow and to help better the community for our residents. All of us up here, as you've heard, we want a lot of the same things. We want a safe community, we want more restaurant options, more amenities, more recreational options, but how, how do we get there? One of my top priorities would be to bring in more small businesses to our area to help strengthen the local economy. With my banking and background, I have many years' experience working with businesses and municipalities to help open doors for economic growth. We have several resources just right here at our fingertips. We've got the industrial park down on Reagan's Chapel, we've got Highway Seventy-seven, which is basically, you know, a corridor that connects I-20 to I-59, and then, of course, we've got the lake. There's so much potential for restaurants and other recreational activity at the lake. So the more businesses we can bring into the area, that's more resources that we can use to reinvest in our community and make all of our lives better. I also want to make sure that all of the citizens know that their voice will be heard. I want the town to operate with honesty, integrity, transparency, tran- transparency and accountability. I'm always open to conversations, whether in person, by phone. I look forward to hearing about any opportunities, any concerns in the community. And again, in closing, everyone up here and everyone in this room wants the best for what's O-Hatchee. A vote for change does not mean that we don't appreciate the time and service of any of the current administration, it just simply means that it's time for new ideas and new voices to move O-Hatchee forward. Thank you again for your time this evening, I would really appreciate your vote on August twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Our next candidate for place five will be Mr. Perry Howard.
Feeling. My name is Perry Howard. Been out here sixty-four years. I graduated O-Hatchee High School, studied at Auburn and Clemson Universities. Currently CEO and CFO of Rayland and Timber. If re-elected, I plan on helping O-Hatchee move in a positive direction, the way we have for the last twenty-five years. As a team, members of the council now, the two mayors we've had in twenty-five years, we have got a lot accomplished out here, a lot. When I first went into office in two thousand, we were driving hammy-down police cars with bald tires. Mayor Robinson was driving hammy-down police car as the mayor mobile. We got involved in a government surplus equipment program several years ago called LSO, Law Enforcement Support Office. We were getting surplus equipment, tools, vehicles, and the way it was set up, we could keep it a year and sell it or either keep it. We generated six hundred thousand dollars for the police department. Now we're rotating cars every three to four years. We just bought a sixty-eight-hundred-dollar infrared drone for them to utilize, in case somebody's lost, runs off in the river, we can locate them. Like I said, I just want to continue to move forward, and we appreciate everybody's vote. Thank you.
Our final council candidate will be Mr. John Dyer.
Thank y'all. I don't have microphone. Did you run off microphone?
Right over here on this side.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's try this again. Thank you, glad to be here. I did not grow up here, I grew up in Coleman, Texas. An old country boy, I grew up forming and ranching. I worked with my dad, and then I worked at nights at the cotton gin, gin and cotton. I worked all my life, I started working when I was fourteen years old. I went to school in Coleman, I graduated top fifteen percent of classes, we had a hundred and fifty in class, but other than that, you know, I'm pretty good. Went on to school, became an engineer. I went to work for the largest and most technical engineering firm in the world, Slumford-John. A lot of people don't know that, a lot of you've heard of Halliburton. Halliburton is a local here in the United States. They are larger here in the United States than what Slumford-John, it's Slumford-John larger around the world. I've worked all over the world, I've worked at a lot of bad spots in the world, I've worked at a Trinidad, which was really nice, my wife got to go with me. Speaking of my wife, y'all might know her, Jan Dyer, she ran Los Abuelos, and then until we had to close, and that was for personal reasons. Now, we didn't leave y'all empty. We called Jose. Jose is the godfather of work, Micasito, and we brought him in. I gave him an offer that he couldn't refuse. It was a good price. We settled that deal over the telephone that day, and he came straight in, fixed it up, what he wanted, the way he wanted, and went right to work. So I didn't want to leave y'all to orphan without a place to go. Now, my family's been here for a long time, both my kids, my son's here, my daughter's not here tonight, her husband, but my son and daughter-in-law are here to support us. We're a close family, we help each other, we stay tight. My stance is God, family, and good neighbors. We have some of the best neighbors over where I live, I live right here on Spring Road. We're the first house on the right when you turn off, Seventy-seven. We've been here for a while. I've got a good friend that hays my field, Mr. Todd. And I'm gonna tell you something, Mr. Todd does a good job. When I had animals, I could call him, and he would bring me, I'd say, "I need two bales of hay, Todd," he would bring two bales and set them in the fields where the pasture's where I want, where my animals are. But I'm gonna tell you something, I'm a deacon now, at the O-Hatchee Church of Christ, have been for about the last twelve years. When a tornado's hit, the next morning, my daughter and son-in-law were out with chainsaws, medical supplies, which she is a doctor now, which I'm awful proud of, I don't have color master anymore. But I guarantee you, they were out for several days, first thing in the morning, helping find people trapped in houses that needing help, needing food. And then we furnished a lot of food, people come as far as I can go, they're taking me to stop. I told them when I started, I couldn't say my name in three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer, and thank you to all our candidates for place five, and all of y'all for O-Hatchee County Council. We thank them for putting themselves out here to serve the community. And that concludes the council portion of the event. We are going to take a few minutes to get things set up for the mayoral candidates, and we will start back with them. So it should take less than five minutes just for clarification. Thank you.